Do you have people in line? On this screen? I think that this is the screen, the screen that we have, right?
That great.
Right.
Thank you for your.
Then we can go ahead. We're ready to start? I'll call the work session to order and we'll put this call over.
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Hagenow. Councilmember Kerr, here. Councilmember Martin.
Present.
Councilmember Parman.
Hi.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Mayor Riley.
Here.
There are six members present.
Thank you. First item is public comment period. If anyone would like to get to comment on any items on the work session agenda. We are now here, this is the right time to do that. And I would ask you, if you're in the room, lay it behind the podium and state your name and where you live or work or your connection to Keystone. And if you're online, raise your hand and we'll recognize you. Please keep your comments to three minutes. With that, is there anyone who'd like to speak? Anyone online? Can you go forward?
Yes.
And that, in that case, if there's no one indicating desire to speak, we'll move on to the discussion of the building subjects. Now turn it over to the town manager.
Okay, we are gonna have the first. We're gonna have a first reading of an ordinance on this at the evening session tonight. This workshop is to just talk about the details before then. We'll have another opportunity to talk about it later. We're on kind of this short timeframe because we're trying to get this ordinance approved by the end of the year. So. The town of Keystone entered into negotiations with the Keystone Center for the purchase of this building that we're sitting in right here. We've come to a general agreement with the owners, the Keystone Center, that they will sell us this building on a lease purchase that will extend six years out until, well, the closing date would be.
Twenty thirty-one.
Twenty thirty-one. I'm not doing, I'm a lawyer, not a mathematician. It's, the total sale price for the building will be $4.1 million, which will include the six acres of land, approximately six acres that this sits on as well as all the furnishings in the building, with the exception of the personal items that will be taken by, by the people who Keystone Center people. But all the major furnishings will be included. We've negotiated with this for quite a while and understand, so I'll, I'll kind of give you the final details of how this would work. Lease term will last from February 1st to December of next year to December 31st of 2031. We will continue to pay $4,900 a month in rent for, for the Keystone Center over the term of this lease purchase and there's a, I need to, I should have these numbers right in front of me and they are right in front of me somewhere. It's approximately a $600,000 down payment. Except for we are.
Five hundred.
Five hundred. Sorry, I just need to scroll everything. I had them on three screens saying disappear. So it's a. Sorry. Five hundred thousand dollar down payment and then we will be paying five hundred, it's five hundred ninety thousand dollars annually until we make the, the final payment. I'm sorry, I should have had this up in front of me.
Five twenty.
Five twenty annually until we make a final payment of just over four hundred. Four hundred eighty thousand dollars. This lease purchase does not obligate the town to continue to make those payments legally. We are only obligated for one year debts. However, if the town decides to back out of the lease purchase, we do lose the funds already paid to the lease purchase. There are still a few items that we are working on administratively. I can let our attorney go into these in a little bit more, but the primary issue would have to do with catastrophic issues and how it would be dealt with, especially later in the lease. Jennifer, if you could go into that for a little bit.
Well, so, as the mayor mentioned at the, at the start of the meeting, we, we are in a tight timeframe of getting this done. We have to approve this lease by ordinance. And the ordinance has to be done on two readings. So we have this reading here in November and then the reading in December. And then it's not effective for 30 days. So we really want it to be effective February 1st. And so we need to get it approved at the December meeting. So we have been, we sent over a draft of the lease to Keystone Center and I heard back Thursday night from Keystone Center on their review. This draft that you have in the packet is, is a very, very good draft in terms of being finalized. The Keystone Center had a couple of comments. One of the comments that I'm waiting to hear back a lawyer from relates to a casualty event. So if there were a circumstance where there would be, for example, a fire in the building that would destroy the building, we'll have this written out in the lease specifically. There, there are already terms about this in the lease, but they want to make some changes to it. So their position is that if there were a fire that destroyed the building, they don't want it to rebuild. They want to give the town the money and then the town would be, would rebuild. We have, that, we have to work that out though.
What money?
How that would work.
Give the town what money?
We.
The insurance proceeds.
We need to certainly know what they are.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's, that's one point that is still being negotiated and I haven't seen the Keystone Center attorneys' revisions to that. But I think that that's something that we can work through.
And your last group policy too, then. I mean, we need.
Yeah, we, and we would be an additional insured on the policy, yes. But I think you could ask for some different women to cover it, yeah.
Yeah, the coverage would be enough to, will ensure it's enough to replace.
Yeah.
The starch. Okay, that's what I want.
Yeah.
Under the terms of the agreement, since we are still technically LSC for six months, all routine maintenance is still the responsibility of the Keystone Center. Nonroutine maintenance, new internet issues like that would be the responsibility of the town if we want to make changes like that, or nonroutine changes.
So what you're saying is existing services, they would continue to provide, but if we add something into the equation like you mentioned, a town uniquely, that we're really responsible for that?
Yes, and we have had the building inspected. Everything is in good shape, even though I keep bringing up the boiler. It actually is only an eight-year-old boiler that the Keystone Center just paid the service this week yet. So the inspection, everything is in good shape, except for a few cosmetic issues, especially you can see like on the trims coming in buildings, some minor cosmetic damage. They're not going to be responsible for fixing any of that. We have the phase one environmental study. There's no concerns with the property. Where it's, it's a good, it's a good building and good under plan. I guess, any questions about?
Yeah, I, I want to publicly note that the $4.1 million that we are talking about here is the exact same, is the assessment of it, is it not?
Correct.
Okay, and who did that assessment? An independent.
We as nation, right?
And you say who it was?
EB, EB, Ebert, Ebert is present.
Now, I, I should know this already, but how old is this?
Nineteen weeks. I think it's seventy-seven, something like that. It's been, so it's approximately.
Okay, and the lease agreement is very specific is about as-is. Is there anything other than those cosmetic things that you're tracking coming out of any of those inspections?
No, everything.
Okay, how old is your building? Every homeowner will ask that question.
I don't know, but it's a metal roof.
Okay.
Not all of it.
Yeah.
I'm looking at that phone.
The inspector said it's in good shape. I don't know who exactly. Question for you. Uh, the tenants are right here now. I know we're gonna be wanting to interest some more space. What, what, why do we read the hands down? Well, for six years, it's, it's, it's Keystone Center's right to lease to the, to the tenants that are here as we reach near the end of our lease term.
But it's one.
Everyone had another room or two. We.
They would end that.
Well, they have leases and, and we, what got away the far? Yeah, there are, there will be excess rooms because the Keystone Center is moving their operations out of the building for the most part, so.
And the lease of presence.
Yes.
Our ability to request additional space. And we received that, if with agreement, we received that space on a, on the same basis that we're paying for existing, existing.
Which, what, second question on section 6.02C. When they talk about the additional rent, I didn't understand the 32%.
It's based on a space that is currently being.
Oh, 32% of the balance?
Oh, that's what we are doing now here.
Okay.
Okay.
Another note is that all of the current tenants are a month of one.
Oh.
That's my last question.
Oh, interesting. Okay.
Yeah, we, I mean, I don't think it's, it, it's not the town's intention in any way to cause problems with the operation of these other tenants, other tenants. Although, we will be working closely with them with the need to expand our S V approach overall ownership of the building. We'll have council discussions on, on how you want to deal with the excess, excess space that we have built. Well, I'll give one last question. Now, there was, we were worried earlier, there are grants out there that are land-based, building-based, you know, some of these infrastructure improvement things. Will this structure that we laid out hinder any, any durability of our? It would have been unknown because first of all, the, the big grants we're looking at is property through land, banking grants, and there's no money on this. So there are ways to do it in the future. We have six years there. It won't, it will impact it, but it won't in any way eliminate or it'll just mean we might have to be a little flexible in how we present the purchase of this building and the land and the sale. How we were supposed to. Did they hold on or did they don't, right? Not, not, well, I'm really more worried about who would buy it. No, they just, do we have a flexibility in this contract to reflect what we might need? To, to get grants? Yes, yes. Okay. What, what we have to do to get these grants is to show a purchase of land that we intend to use for housing. Doesn't need to be split up? It probably will be. And so. Yeah. But we do that after we acquire? Well, we can do it, really, we don't acquire it until the sixth year. So if they don't provide us grants to lease property.
Right.
They will provide it to acquire property. We plan on using housing funds as part of the original payment. If that creates too much heartburn with DOLA, just pay back the housing fund and then the sixth year, split it up and and get the DOL, it's okay, so that's.
So continuing that same later line of thoughts. So the bottom line is we can't do anything with that grant, that land, whatever we have in mind until we own it, right?
Correct.
So what I want to do is.
I mean, we could have got permission, but it would not be a wise decision to start building on land that we don't.
Although there's so much planning involved.
Yeah.
That could probably start.
Yes.
Okay, only time on these projects. Given our intent to create this community center feeling with the town hall, what can or can we not do in the next six years with respect to changing lighting, putting signage out, using the parking lot for, for like a, a trailhead party, anything other than just parking? What are our limitations or opportunities?
Well, these things are being nonroutine. We have to pay for them ourselves. We'd coordinate with the Keystone Center, but they understand these things are happening. And I assume, I'll turn to our attorney here. I know that we address these types of issues in the lease, so.
Yeah, that's another thing. We're, John is gonna put a shed on the property and so that's gonna be described in the lease. And so I will work to make sure that there's language in the lease that allows for additional items on the, on the property. Interior-wise, definitely, we can make improvements.
And you know, one, one, kind of two questions in, in my question then. We can do things. We can have community gatherings without them paying.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
I mean, to, we're going to be, we're going to continue our.
Yes, I understand that much. That's crazy.
Other questions?
No question, but I just feel wanted to point out that I'm grateful for the legal experience and skill of our attorney. This doesn't get, these kinds of contracts don't get negotiated too often and to have you backing us up is brilliant, thank you.
Yeah, Jennifer was a superstar in this and, and I, I think we, we also need to reach out and thank the Keystone Center who definitely, they did not come in with this sort of adversarial approach, which was nice.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Senator, for that. My number.
So we'll discuss this later to my other first reading. I think the mayor was intending to do a lot of public comments.
I was gonna ask the council for permission. Let's do that meeting to a lot of.
Would you bear with me? During our council manager release today, we had the sense that if we ever change our mind for any, any reason, financial among others, we could walk away. We can get money back, but we could walk away, right?
Correct.
So if we made a decision to do that regardless of the reason, in the period between when we make that decision and give that heads up to the Keystone Policy Center and when we find an alternative location, clearly we have to pay the base rent during that period. Would we also have to pay the additional?
The, the way that you walk away is by not appropriating budget money for the next year.
Okay, so which means we have to be ready to move.
Yeah, I mean, it's really a year-to-year.
Okay.
Decision.
Okay.
Questions? This will be on the agenda for first reading. And I can, I guess, ask the question now. Would anyone in the council object to having that first reading also being a public hearing?
Well, no one knows that, do they?
What?
Did we advertise it as a public?
It was not on the agenda in that manner, but it would allow people to make comments if they, if they'd like to.
In addition to the second reading public hearing?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Given the community more opportunities. The community can very clearly, could very clearly make comments during the public comment period. But this would also, this gives them a very specific opportunity to.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any objections for that? All right, then we will just, I'll just go forward and do that as one of the, I think I would probably announce that as we start, start the meeting. Any other last, last chance, any other comments? All right, next, here it goes for the town manager and the chief to talk about the police budget.
Okay, so we have the chief here to talk about his 2026 budget here. We have a, I hesitate to say this, but we have a relatively wide workshop tonight. I think this is the first one since I started, so.
So maybe if you think that most of our time with the police chief.
Yes.
Yeah, everybody meant.
It asks you, it's what I've been. If you have questions beyond the budget, I'm sure the chief would, won't happen. He would accommodate those.
Did you hear the same word here?
So you, you saw the budget in the packet and I, yesterday after got permission, sent out Dylan's budget, which I, I need to really start this conversation with the fact that you as a council have, have kind of undergone this before. This is the last time you'll see a budget like this for the police department. Next year will be a much cleaner, one single budget, not splitting the two different things. This is everyone trying to get their heads down around how we do this while at the same time, chief was desperately trying to do it. So not just the budget, but actually set up the police department. So we understand this budget is maybe not optically perfect, but it does, it does come down to the same numbers in the end. You'll see that Keystone, the split on the budget is still one-third, two-thirds Keystone Dillon. We will be addressing that in the IGA in the future. Other than that, I don't know if, chief, if you want to say anything first, there's a few questions.
I'm kind of curious, questions are. No, I think that that's, that's a fair assessment. A lot of lessons learned. This budget here, for whatever reason, has been really challenging. All over. So I do think that the funding request is appropriate. It's very much in line with the spirit of the IGA. It falls within the IGA. And we're still on track of exactly where we need to be going. But I think, I think it's very, very, say, if people think back of, you know, administratively, we had work that started in January, excuse me, February, but we did not come online until the 1st of September until July. So we have accomplished a lot in the leadership period of time, as have all of you as a council and as a town. So I think it's very complimenting that there's a lot that has gotten done. Very excited about what the people looks like and I think it's appropriate. So, and I know there's a lot of questions. So the great thing is I think there's a lot of time to learn, so.
We noticed that you were, throughout the project, you were.
That is true, and just so the council knows, like, I'm usually in uniform unless I'm running back and forth because, and I'll share this with you with the owl. So every minute you go to, everybody has that two issues, right? So one of our citizens actually called me out a couple of weeks ago and said I've been in Dylan's town council for months, but they don't realize exactly where I sit. But she got phoned down by one time and said, listen, this is usually what I look like here. And it's been like, so. Not that we're that confrontational, but I need personal protection.
Yeah, just to start off, can you go through, actually, if you want to ran it out?
Okay, so on the budget, they're broken down into different spots. There's three of them. Going on one, being patrol over allocation. So patrol services encompasses all our patrol staff, detective staff, sergeants, CTOs. That all comes out of one of these, right? So when you look at the patrol over allocation, that's a large number because that's the majority of our staff. At this viewpoint, if you go down, I believe it's on the first page, where it's broken down into CSO's, right? So it has its own over allocation. That is actually for the CSO person.
CSO means?
Mini service.
And what's in the, what is, what do you have as overhead?
Benefited salaries, benefits. All the administrative pieces behind that employee specifically.
Okay, so overhead does include that.
Yeah. So the way that I think about it is, is there's a lot of people that will say, you know, salaries range from this to that, right? You have starting patrol salary, and this, and this is just hypothetical. Say you have a patrol salary starting in a 26, going to 120, right? I like to use the number actually, salary for benefited because it's not reflective of what that employee costs. Like, if, if your marketing is, you're going to hire the 120. You know, with our benefits package and all of the stuff that goes with it, it's more like a one year. Just hypothetically, not completely. You know, because our benefits package is quite competitive. We earn out the, we don't have the highest salaries, but we don't have the lowest. We do have a step program that has been funded for years, which, if you're, if you're wondering, like, in the world of law enforcement, it has changed drastically very quickly. Employees really want to have that ability to come in and work somewhere and top up quickly. Takes five years for us to top up. Half of our staff is top of. That's because our attrition rate is very, very low. So that's not by mistake. The other portion, that is, we're an R P P A organization, so the Fire and Police Pension Association provides our, that type of pension pensions. I think our town insurance and things along those lines are, are more than appropriate. Are they the best now in the organization?
All those are, you ran allocations by?
Yeah, so even going into the back page, so there is, even differences in split, so why I.
Are you, we're including the back page on that proof. How many, how many officers are included in the patrol overhead allocation? What's all, from a staff standpoint, what's included?
Fifteen and one.
Fifteen officers?
Yep.
Fifteen patrol?
Yep, so right now, we're allocated fifteen and one, which is me because really I'm still not able on the road. So the fifteen and one, and then two other additional positions are not in that. So when we go to the other page, that's what you're gonna see. The other portion is administration portion.
So basically, your entire staff would be yourself, fifteen patrol, and then the two of the positions. So a total of.
Well, for 26, there would be one additional, which is listed out, which is a community service. So we actually, yeah, we actually separated that.
Right.
For a lot of different reasons, because when we talk about patrol and what that looks like, so I'm looking at, are people sworn? when we talk about patrol and what that looks like, so I'm looking at, are people sworn law enforcement officers? Are they unsworn or the administrative? Different for the tons of, and we're pretty basic. We have a police officer one position, which is patrol. We have a police officer two position, which is, in our world, we have working detectives. So in 26, we'll have two working detectives that are taking on caseload, also filling holes in the road. The K nine position is actually involved with that as well, because that was actually applicable to the level. And then me and one class, so. So that's kind of a general breakdown of that, and then the administration portion. As I said, we have two people that are administering the.
I have a basic question. So on your, on your headings, you identify a couple of columns that are the amount difference. I'm not sure I understand what difference is. Is that the difference between the 2026 budget and the 2025 actual or what?
Yes, one is the difference, so the monetary figure, one is the percent difference, 25 actual and 27.
I get that, but we're comparing the 2026 budget with what? The 2025 budgeted, actual?
I believe it's budgeted.
Okay.
And I, and I will say that there are some errors. There were some errors in the estimates, because there wasn't really anything to estimate on, and for some reason, like, our finance department just put some estimates in there for the 25s. And going into 26, like, tree chop is in there?
Yeah.
There's actually, there's exactly different places in there.
And the tree top, is that, any sound problem? Okay.
There was three of them there. That was just.
Detox, tree top, then you have Mert.
So detox actually changed a little bit because they're closing it in December, so we did not.
Okay, and that's a separate organization?
It is.
Okay, and Mert?
Mert is the municipal emergency response team.
Okay, I love you.
Yep. Your task is increasing because you're actually going to put people on.
If I can keep going to the end, on the second page, there's a general public safety operations line item. What does that incorporate? Very last.
There's, sorry.
That's everything from this supplies line down.
Oh, that's a summary.
Yeah. So everything that is listed above that, I think, obviously, the overhead.
Okay, and then the overhead's the same, the salary, okay, go ahead.
But is, is, is that overhead on, under the general safety, public safety operations? Is that where the administrative staff is located?
I'm sorry, can you?
Is the administrative staff located under, under that?
The last one?
Yeah.
Obviously, we hired somebody new.
Yep, yeah, and, you know, the town manager and I had a really good discussion a week ago. So when this started, there was, there were some problems, and I said that we've done a lot in a very short period of time. And depending on how the rest of your process goes or what that looks like. So the budget narrative coming at the end of that, well, actually, we picked what already has been added. So the first priority, we added someone with a non-score who deals with all the RIT issue, which is a wide scope envelope because everything is RIT related. That was added, the K nine handler was added, the patrol sergeant was added. And I believe the CSO was the last priority, but it didn't get added because we couldn't pull that. So the CSO is actually in the 26 budget. But looking into the future of what that looks like, we have spots laid out for what the department will look like in the 20. And there, there's kind of an outflow there. Coming into the 26 budget, just looking at the numbers that, what we put in for is what people can afford. Is it on perfectly on track of what the org chart looks like in 26? No, we're one short, but nobody can pull it. So as it goes in, 28 is actually what the department would look like long term, fully staffed up, very even up funding wise, you know, because there is kind of a capital gap there. You guys are starting with very little capital items, but you're catching up, right? You had two cars last year, and that's been the one condition, right? So there, there's some capital pieces, and they're not even out in 27 and 28. And that's really what the department's going to look. And that's from a staffing perspective and, you know, growth perspective, that's a really good, really good investment of that because your police department is exactly where it already needs to be unless in the first year. So when you look at kind of positions added, you know, there, there is going to be kind of an interest in, and we're going to do this next year. You know, what does that look like? What can you afford? Is the 33% going to add one person, two people? What are the costs associated with it? So there's that, you know, there's going to be discussion about can you, can you, what can you afford, what's not appropriate? That's kind of the basic philosophy, the 33%. When you look in the IGA, that is for a reason, and then when you look at the timeline, that was also for a reason. So the additions, you know, as it balances out, at the end of it, will be a very professional, well-served department, all ten of us and inclusive.
And as you hinted, the agreement, as I remember, we shift from the one third, two thirds to a copies reimbursement, 100% of the cost.
That very well could be, but as we get close to the end of that, I think that we're probably going to have a different expectation of updating as, as both times see fit.
Well, we have access to those documents because it's helpful to see what's in your head is and what you plan.
Yep.
Kind of the strategy that we're going to be paying for. For, and as an example, you added the K nine handler, some of K nine, this year?
Yep.
Okay, how was that decision? Was John part of that?
That, actually, some of those started before John.
Yeah, I press the ancient.
Yeah.
And you recognize my, my purpose, of course, is to be part of decisions to add capabilities. And I, I wasn't aware that we still don't have a code enforcement officer, so what's the timeline for that?
26 budget is sort of.
That is me, January or next August?
26.
Okay.
The program is only now, obviously, you would be able to agree here with a person for that. But I don't see that as being a issue.
Do they have, what kind of termings required for that job?
It depends on the person.
Well, let's say you're not part of a kind of enforcement. Or you need to stay with the officer.
Well, frankly, when we kind of get a feel of what that looks like, when we reach out to people that already have got, strike that program with somebody that knows what they're doing.
Okay.
Is that, is that going to happen? I don't, we have the opportunity to hire the right person that can develop that program, maybe, we would absolutely consider that.
You have one before.
Dylan actually has had one before.
Yeah, and that.
And depending on the chief and what the workload is, like, a lot of chiefs would say, I won't pass as a patrol officer. You know, when you look in the return in the future, you know, I would like two of them.
Yes.
I think there's going to be enough need for both towns, but I think that that would be an appropriate piece of the department.
Did they have?
Other investigations, clearly, that the number of investigations, special investigations, is pretty small. That's not investigating cases on a weekly basis. What is that? As far as like caseload? Well, if you have investigations on, I think, the second page, it's a little section, and the total is four, six, five, five, three, 26, small number, and so I'm curious what, what that is, and then under what budgetary call the cost of investigating the cases.
So under investigations, the, the special investigations line that is in there, is that the one they were referring to or just basically?
Yeah, it says just as investigations, four, six, or five, five.
So that's actually, we put that in there to cover the costs of investigations. So if, for example, if we had a domestic violence situation in a property in Keystone, and we incurred costs, whether it be testing, the finance board, DNA, like, other certain costs that come with that, that, that is something that we can take out of there. Special investigations, we used upon, if you got to fly somewhere, if you have to do interviews. And we, we observe a lot of those, a lot of those numbers up other lines as well.
Okay.
But that's, that's in there, realizing that you're, that's, this is only reflective of, of Keystone's part of that. We also have one in our budget as well. You know, try and, it's kind of interesting, emergency services, like, we could budget $25,000 and spend two. Or, or I think it's, it's kind of appropriate that, like, if we get into bigger cases, we start, really, we can spend money quickly for, you know, those credit loans and stuff like that, but it usually covers what we mean of that. Like I said, you can observe a lot, so.
Well, a lot of those lines, that was one of the questions I had, was, that's really just additional for other costs investigation, because labor, you know, because you have to investigate officers to somewhere else. So this is just incidentals on top of the investigation. So it's kind of tough to understand some of that.
Yep.
Is your budget handled internally, is it the finance director from town that, that does this for you?
I will say, this year has, we've led many worse times.
Yes, this is complicated.
It is complicated, but I think, obviously, the groundwork that got laid by the agreement of that, I see it in the next few years' order. I don't think it'll be as complicated as the first year, but. Other questions?
I have a couple of general questions. Obviously, going into a joint police department, there were some expectations as to what that may mean for you guys. Have you seen those expectations kind of materialize, or have you seen anything pop up that wasn't on your expectation list? Or something that maybe is popping up on radar, that maybe something coming down the road?
That's a great question. One of our council members asked a version of that question as well. There, there has been some stuff that we hadn't really thought of, some really, like the URL, for example. Like, very, not mission critical type of things, but more, like, holy cow, you didn't really think of what that looks like, did you? What does it change, you know, the dog combination? You know, everything else is kind of fallen into place. It's a matter of getting certain things, like, obviously, we have four cars out right now that are being built still. And what the graphics looks like of that, because starting over with a lot of new companies, especially the new graphics package, has been, it's just taken a little longer than I think about this coming. And then, obviously, the biggest one that I thought probably should go, I thought, well, it just got bastard moving court. There's been a lot of back and forth between three different agencies, organizations with court. I think that that, that to me has been the biggest, the biggest piece of it where I just thought it would be a smother of that. But ironically, at the end of next year, like, new CAD or RMS that is coming in, some of the issues that we've had to deal with now won't come to issue, which is unfortunate. That was kind of the only, the only timing piece that really was quite cheap.
When you say CAD or RMS, what do you mean?
So CAD is computer aided dispatching, so it comes out of the comp center, and RMS is the record management system. So right now, all of the cooperating partners, which you are now a part of as of 2025, which actually went a lot better than some of us thought, because, you know, for example, all the cooperating partners fall in the center. So there are people that are involved that are users, Keystone is one of those users. But, for example, right now, you know, people want to be a part of that so they have access to certain services. Like, the coroner's office just put in a request to actually be included in the regular system that Keystone already done in 25, which actually would process from the bylaws and the board and the stuff, actually, they're going to use again to really add for the court. It was, it actually worked really well with the Keystone portion of that. And I think it was just good timing and the right people.
What did you mean when you said the CAD or RMS is going away?
So the system that they have in place now has been in place for many, many years. It has not been very strong since it was implemented many hundred years ago.
It's not got stronger.
It has not gotten stronger, but many years ago, there, I mean, it's, it's coming to the end of life period. So there's going to be a new system implemented, which the RPA, I believe, is out for that, and then it is a huge project. It'll take probably the better part of a year and a half, two years, just to roll out. But I think that that product will be much, much better, more efficient for our officers who we know. The records piece, which doesn't really get a lot of recognition in our way like that, but it's super important because, you know, all of the laws and regulations that are kind of criminal justice records and things like that, so. I know, I'm very excited about it. But clearly, the negotiation is in the customer, so it is a huge project.
So the CAD or RMS system is different than the system that the AI-based non-emergency call system, which is possibly be implemented now.
Yep, the AI, the AI programs are already in place, but as this other project gets rolled out, it will be complementing. So there will be an interface in there where we can communicate as they work in that as well.
And will this be a big price tag coming when this gets implemented?
I'm not going to talk about the price tag then, because they're negotiating, there, there will be money associated.
And it goes to the police forces for just the call center?
Does, does it go through the call center and leave budget through the IGA call center? So it just gets dropped down to usage right now?
So it's not part of your?
It's user funded and it is tax funded as well, again, I'm one more. So there's another one. Safety first. I guess, so, yeah. So it is funded from a variety of.
But we can anticipate.
I would anticipate, but, like I said, I'm not going to throw them in the result, even though I don't even know much less.
No.
If they're in the middle of the negotiation, I couldn't expect them to.
This is my last question, I promise. The, I just want, from a structure perspective, when we talk about the, the, a little piece on P E revenue, and then, of course, the expenses, but, you know, we're going down the cost center. So what's the difference there is, is so many, I think it's a good $100,000 less, but. So we have a budget and we are running an expensive, I mean, don't. Is there, where, where you, I was looking, what was, then to us? When I, when I got to the very top, it says that totally Houston P E revenue in our proposed budget, 1.4. And then I, I just, the expenditures are less $2,000. I'm just, just curious, I mean, is there? We're, we're, I, I kind of view the place as a cost center, which I would think that, you know, it really.
This budget is from the accountability perspective, so that would be the revenue that Dylan's going to receive from us. The 14th of 12 would be the revenue and Dylan would be receiving from us for police service. It doesn't just search for match.
As I was explaining, the way this budget was deduced in two separate documents has caused some issues like that. The 1.412 is one third of the total cost. I would imagine that Dylan's budget line is $15,000 out.
So that, that's a difference. Me as a small number, I just, I was kind of expecting.
If you're open to it, I have questions that are not questions for that.
Go ahead.
You'd say no.
No, let's make sure before you move on.
So tell us about here, and this is great to have you sitting at the table with us, I appreciate it. Just the fact that you had to explain what is the CAD RMS is, being, you know, acknowledged as a fact that we don't know the world that well. Could you tell us your assessment in the last of your initial months with us of the pedestrian and traffic safety M V S?
The more I start.
What aspect?
Like, is it getting better? Is it, is it getting worse?
Okay.
Have we had an impact on that?
Okay.
We gotta get some time.
Yes. Totally sweet, have to time.
Yeah.
I'll take that.
That's okay. Yeah, I think that we have that impact on slowing people down. I think that there's still a lot of people speeding and driving recklessly, which is why we're going to do a public campaign, and it's actually going to grow. Because Silverstone is going to be involved with it. Silverstone.
It's going to be us there.
I'm not, I'm saying, no, you know, then. For, working with the judge. He is not happy with the high speeds. So 20 over, you're going to go see the judge, he has a summons, you know. The judges, the judges took a point of, you know, what does that look like as a community service, as a jail time? So those conversations are on the board. Do you have certain organizations that are talking about photo enforcement radar? On the civil penalty side? I think the latest one that actually incorporated is Vale a couple weeks ago. So, wide scope, is there still an issue there? Yes, I think it is probably the biggest priority that I hear from bullet towns. And I don't know if it's ever changed, I know, you know, bigger, broader discussions about speed law and traffic tolling, what is that like, and volume. I mean, Monday was a good example of that, there was a lot of people skiing Monday morning. There's not a whole lot of training up there, but there's a lot of people skiing. And there was a lot of traffic, and I don't know exactly, you know, we're in traffic times, but there was a lot of traffic throughout the summertime, but you can already tell with the limited, I mean, there's a lot more waters that seems to sound a lot, so. So that's part of it.
Can I follow up on one of those third points? So when judges debate entirely for penalties like public service or jail time or whatever, how does that translate to affecting other people's behaviors? Hopefully that guy, okay, I'll never speak again, but I'm interested in all those, don't think we'll have.
It's an interesting phenomenon in certain towns that become speed traps.
I'm not sure we're looking for that, but I don't know.
I never got that, I never got that, people on the machine either, but I would say, you know, visible presence and different ways to slow people down. And then, and I'm not saying slow people down where, you know, it's below the speed limit. You know, good driving habits, safe driving habits, you know. And a lot of that has to do with having, and people are in enforcement, but that's only part of it, because it doesn't seem to prohibit the enforcement.
Right.
So when it does go on stage with that, with the judges. For example, we had an issue many years ago with shoplifting in one of our stores. The judge bought outside for every dollar of item that he stole, we're going to argue between the two. We don't seem to have that problem.
Okay.
You know, do I think that that's going to have the same effect on the roadway?
Yeah.
I don't think it's going to have the, that quite a drive. It's going to require a bunch of effort and and for whatever reason, I mean, Silverstone, we are going to do a public campaign to get the messaging out there, because it's, it's everywhere. I mean, there's been 10 fit towers in Grand Company. That is incredibly poor.
And those people are coming this way?
Uh, there, you know, that's, you know, the one thing that I will say is, we have just as many issues with people that litter.
Oh, I'm not suggesting it's a thing.
You know, but really trying to, to have people think about what they're going to get in the car, what it's like. You know, some of the other infrastructure departments that, that are going to happen. I will tell you, I'm in over there. The 205 coming this way is going to be a challenge. Just because of volume and what that looks like and stagnant traffic and all the things that I think a lot of people are used to dealing with, but is there anything that we can do?
That is a good question.
Like signage in, outside, somewhere, indicating that the interstate is open or not open, because if it's not open, then you should stay in Keystone and have dinner and be within the businesses as opposed to sitting on Highway 6 being weathered mad and have a kiss.
Front level pass, which is also closed, but there's not as good signage about it. But let me, let me ask about a, a, a portion of that traffic. So weekend morning, gridlock on US 6 is difficult for residents trying to come in and out, and for businesses, for people are unwilling to get off because of so. Is there anything that you, the police force, can do to help that situation?
Weekend morning, you live here and you want to go somewhere.
Week and morning, yes. Or you're a business owner and you realize that all this traffic going by, no one will get off because it's too hard to pick back on.
What do you mean, get off?
Get off US 6 to stop at a store. Turn left on a Saturday morning is a nightmare and dangerous. I'm going to turn, put you on the spot right now with the, what we're thinking about, and I wonder what your thing is.
I think that we have a lot of the same thoughts, I mean, the sidewalk project was amazing. And I think just the walkability and what you're looking for as far as lighting and what that looks like. I will guarantee you that when we do have visibility traffic days, that we have cars to wire these around. Because the pedestrian interface, but it's different when there's really heavy volume, because it's not as fast.
You said the same thing. It is interesting, I feel like we interrupt on a couple of the subjects you passed there and I turn back to it. But the point that Carol is making here, like, see, you want to come out, raise your drive. If you want to make a left-hand turn out of the razor drive in the morning or weekend, well, you can't. In fact, actually, the, the correct thing to do would probably be to put your car in park, get out and hit the pedestrian crossing light so that people might not, oh wait, they don't pay attention to those, they just sit stopped in the intersection, and I've been honked at while I'm walking in the crosswalk in front of them, stop traffic, and like, I'm setting you back like five seconds before you have to hit the brakes. These people are, are definitely, they had bad drive up from Tampa, what can you say? But that's, I think, the sort of problem that we're working out, you just, you can't try, you can just kind of try and force your way in. And, and I don't know that, that there is a solution to that, because we know the real solution is some intersection management that CDO has to approve. But I don't, I don't know if there's a solution that you can proper, but I think that's what she was kind of...
I think it's all, you know, having early discussions and planning, and you're not wrong. Civil involvement takes time to do, right? So in the future, there will be different developments, there will be different developments. You know, how you incorporate the traffic plan a bit, which Keystone's kind of maybe, right, because the roadway through the valley, but they still know each other, they still need some issues, so I'm just not that creative of a traffic engineer yet.
So you can just hope it's fine.
But I think that there, you know, having discussions on what that looks like in the future. You know, some of the discussions that I know other towns about is roundabouts, bridges, underpasses, you know, huge price tags, they take items, but from a grand perspective, potential. You know, because, because I think that you've already taken steps, you know, to increase that pedestrian feel coming into that, and I heard you talk about, you know, acquisitions, building and having a time center focus, and what does that look like from the walkability and wayfinding? You know, where do you want to end up? All of that stuff goes into this. It takes a while for people to come up with a resolution.
You want?
Yeah, I think that, I mean, for anyone listening online, when we've had our previous discussions, obviously, we would love to see another pass there, or as the town manager and I had talked about, the condo station would have stopped there, but I think when, when we're talking back to the realm of what you could do, Chief, I guess a question I have is, switching back to an earlier topic, I'm, I'm excited to hear about the public campaign to like, get it in people's minds, to be safer drivers. And I'm curious what your thought is in getting that message out there, when we will get, like, say, time available, getting those A D S camera, those have to have signs, and those warn people, hey, there's, there's going to be radar cameras up ahead, so maybe you should slow down if that drives, do you think that drives compliance?
It's a very valid point. So when we do certain days of this, you're going to see really large N S boards. Clearly, the tagline that I was into, you know, I don't think the resort would enjoy, you know, using the technology like Steep Asper slope.
I, I, however, I say that.
But along those, yes, it needs to be very, very visible in public, and now the interesting thing, and I'm, I'm a bit drunk, I don't mind. You know, we have signage, right? It's telling you, slow there, drive the speed limit, you're driving the speed limit, have a great day. Like, enjoy your time in the mountains, like, be awesome. But if you're going to drive aggressively and drive wherever the speed limit is, even after the sign of that, you know, that's something that we would include in our compact, if we picture the sign saying, you know, follow the speed limit. And I know it's kind of a rudimentary approach to that, but, you know, if you pass the speed limit sign and a B M S, and you're still 20 over, wow, that's just not intelligent, so.
And if I could come right in a little bit, I've had some talks with Vale resorts about, one problem we really had is it just, we get traffic backed up in the right lane to turn right, and then they stop in the left lane, just trying to get out of the line, but still get the parking lot. So we're talking about ways to facilitate loading the, the Gomela lot, Montezuma lot, just more quickly and efficiently.
I know you presented these couple of options, have you gotten any feedback on them?
Yeah, no, but we're going to talk again.
And I will, I will tell you that I have suggested, John, when he does his negotiations, that our, as a whole, is to say we have patrol officers who can help us in play. I can't commit you, but maybe that.
And I know that they were also trying to get a variable message board to put in, but there was a delay with getting that installed. Is that still the case?
Are you talking about the resort?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we were, well, they have their variable message board out there. Well, another conversation we've had is actually permanent message boards coming in, and that is still planned, hopefully for next year, to get something in the ground there, and what I'd like to be able to do is get traffic in the right lane that's going into Keystone, keep it in the right lane from way down there, but keep it moving, that there's not this question of trying to get past people in the left lane and keep the left lane for people trying to get out of the east nor side of the road roads or heading up, up those road paths, basically.
That, that would just be fantastic to see. Speaking of future signs, I know you've requested CDO put in a no engine braking noise ordinance enforced sign, any update there?
And now I need to check into that again, we keep getting, we got it under control, we going in, I mean, it's...
So the reason I asked, that is in our recent coffee with council, we actually had a representative from the gateway complain about jake brake noise and ask if anything could be done with that, and so...
And he can narrow it down to between four and five in the morning.
I think at this point, despite Silverstone saying to do it, if I, this be our town.
Well, and that's why I'm asking Chief, if, as Carol pointed out, he pointed out, it was in the wee hours of the morning that seemed to be the same truck on a daily basis, who has, or nearly daily basis, early in the morning, who has unmarked old jake brakes and is kicking off. In front of the gateways.
They're the part of the, the green.
Look, it's down there.
Yeah, we couldn't get a better description out of the truck itself, we did ask him for that. But I can, I can attest, because I can hear that, and those unmarked jake brakes, if you can hear the gateway, you have to help me, you too.
Yep, you know, when Dylan interacted that, we actually worked with State Patrol C M V people a lot to get an idea of, like, what the engine muffler actually, how much it works and does it work, and some trucks that actually had that equipment and are still super loud. But I would imagine, before the sixth, we will, I sense, very appreciate it.
So you discussed some of the things that we've been talking about, long term, we're looking at CDO helping us with roundabouts or, or other things. But here we are now, and I love the messaging campaign, because we can do that immediately. But between now and when there may or may not be some detentions down the roundabout, I'm very concerned about things that the, other things that we could be doing, and that's, that's why I'd like to pick your brain. We've talked about speed control through speed cameras, through getting a traffic study for, to change the speed limit. And I'd like to know your assessment of both of those thoughts, and what is it that we're not even making up? Because it's not our way, but we want it to be.
Well, clearly, there's no lack of roundabout discussions in the valley.
Well, that's, I'm not, I don't have to worry about that right now, that's not happening next year, so what can we do this year?
I think having a presence of that and changing the culture coming in. The signage project, I think, is outstanding to improve law and just basic patterns within the union sector. So if you have the people to litter and you want to sit in your senior, you know, and there's staggering traffic in the right lane, you know, people that are running the left lane and then finding a place to either make their way in or start shooting or guarding. You know, realizing that there's maybe consequences if they're driving in permission. That is...
And you want the consequences or...
You know, we're here to enforce what, what the laws are on the books, that are almost on this.
Can you address speed cameras?
Can I address them?
Yes, good, bad, challenges, expenses, what is your experience, what's your knowledge?
I would, I would think that that would be an agenda, I would, probably in the next two to three months.
Oh, you're making it up, I'm just going to point right now.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that they do serve a purpose. We have already researched them, we've researched a couple of different companies, what does it look like? The infrastructure pieces, can we get the behavior change with them? What kind of penalties are associated with punitive, like, you have some organizations that set them for probably six to eight over. I think our original discussion, we had... I think our original discussion, we had setting them much larger than that, you know, trying to deal with the aggressive driving in high speeds. And I might find some of the permanent point that, you know, there's certain primaries to go with that. The town attorney voted in when, when you guys actually adopted the model traffic code, which was incredibly intelligent, you know, so it can be done. But there's, you know, what does it cost? Is it gonna give us the result that we want? I think that that's part of a, kind of a bigger discussion in the long term.
But it sounds like it's on your agenda, on your.
Oh.
On your.
It is, but.
Your horizon, your service, my concern.
Yeah, short, short term horizon. But there's also some other discussions, you know, when you look nationally, there's a large discussion going on with block cameras. Block cameras are also in the crime fighting world. All of our cars already have LPRs, maybe today, and we use them to fight crime. Like Keystone had a rash of like that sort of summer term. We use that camera and actually generate a suspect, because other than the truck at two and four in the morning, there's only so many cars. And that generated the suspect, which instead of giving people some closure in that case, we can solve that. So I think that that, it needs to be part of the bigger discussion of like what people are comfortable with. You know, because there's a lot of people that, that aren't interested in speed cameras physically. They don't want that kind of big brotherism, is the term a lot of the citizens use in real. We don't want that. And that's really a policy decision that you guys, if you're comfortable with that as a tool that you think is appropriate, I'm, I am gonna present it for sure. So you guys can have those discussions, what you're comfortable with or not.
Exactly.
I think any, any tool that, that benefits the town in these streets, they were seen, I think, I think is worth the discussion. Because, you know, the judge has been around for a long time to see him just go off the rails of the high speed, like we had somebody on the radar in Keystone over a hundred miles an hour, and our car stopped in the first row.
You probably noticed no surprise on our face.
No, no.
Can I follow up on that? The second part of that was your thoughts about getting a traffic study, which I soon have to pay for, to reset speed limits like in our business. So what are the pros and cons of something like that?
And that depends on who you talk to.
Well, I'm talking to you.
No, I'm talking, that discussion is not good. I've had service that can hold that have said, don't do the speed study, because they'll increase the speed limit, because the roadway, at least that portion of highway six is designed for higher speeds.
Yeah, the county's business is also relevant to just how the road is designed.
Yeah, that, it'll be an interesting discussion of, you know, what, what changes can be done from a town perspective coming in the town here, whether it be acceleration, deceleration, sidewalks, just separation of pedestrians. I think that's what gives you the big question.
If I can weigh in here a little bit too, I'm just, and actually over in Winter Park, we had our speed limit go up after the study, trying to bring it down. I think first, we have to make sure we implement things like Chief has thought about enhanced enforcement and everything we can to slow the traffic down. So when they do the speed study, we don't have a car by the hundred miles an hour over skews that speed study. It's, you know, they, they set the speed at the eighty fifth percentile is the rule.
That, I appreciate you mentioning that before. I just wanna take the opportunity to pick your brain. And again, I, I think many of us are concerned about the near term. So traffic study down the lane maybe, but people do that.
Is there anyone else who is, it's kind of two budget questions. If we can bring us back to the budget for what we asked Chief. Obviously, I think we have a work session scheduled future for police issues and questions. But the two budget questions I have is staffing, which you talked briefly about. Kudos for a low attrition rate. Obviously, that doesn't happen overnight. Is the current staffing where you'd want to be?
I think it's appropriate, what we're asking for in twenty six and what people can afford and what we can accommodate. Is it exactly where we need to be? No. Would it be great to snatch fingers and say, yes, we want to fill all these positions next year that are budgeted out into twenty eight? That'd be great, but we don't have any space to put people either. That's a huge problem, which, which we're dealing with. And, you know, kudos to our staff, and, and I mean, you've been there, and it's, it's tough. Now, so kudos to them coexisting very small space. So I think it's appropriate for where we're at and what it needs to be.
Related to that, my last question on budget is, and maybe town manager might have some input on this, is as someone who's done it right along in the senior office operations, not only would I encourage council members and community members to do it right along, but at one point, the town of Dillon had appropriated money for a study on a new facility. Is that something that to regenerate that? Or is that something that you guys bring up, or is that the councils that bring up and then would appropriate the money for an initial study on it? Or how, how is, would that ever happen?
Yeah, and yes, we actually have twelve thousand five hundred in our budget. Yeah, we're getting split a twenty five thousand dollar facilities analysis study for the police department.
Which, that would prove, just so you're aware, that was started in quarter nine.
Okay, sorry. I'm in there. So Chief, I will, just to kind of circle back, to kind of pull a couple of these together. You talked about upcoming priorities, the budget in the future, you know, being even increased manning would be beneficial. Is there, what is driving an increase in those kind of things? I mean, when you say, hey, we're, we're doing okay with what we have currently, why, what are we throwing to, or what are we using to project future expenditures? And, and, you know, if we're, we're kind of hitting it, meeting it now, is that based on just population? Or is it based on you're, you're not.
It's not going very well.
Not necessarily hitting.
Okay.
It's what you can afford now.
Right, so that's, so what areas are we not hitting those things very well right now?
There's sheer numbers, and, you know, it's, you know, kudos to our staff for that, because they are, you know, we in turn picked up another large area of our responsibility. You know, it wasn't really new to us, because we were here a lot anyways. Because, you know, the predecessor wasn't here as much as they needed to be. So we were here anyways. So kind of taking that over of that, kind of starting where we started from, I think, was a good starting point, but there needs to be so many people on the shift. That's kind of where we're at, like we don't have, we don't have a huge overhead, we don't have a huge executive staff. We want to put people on the boat. So, so many people for a shift. Monday's a great example. There's three incidents going on Monday morning in eighteen fifteen in Keystone and two in Dillon, which is, that's a lot to absorb with the allotment of people and staff that are working. You get three people on, you know, as they prioritize that, it's gonna be a long way to certain events, which I think we brought a lot of those numbers actually down, just being on the side of the camera and being present. So I think, you know, where we're at is, yes, it is working. I think at least the feedback that I get from a lot of citizens, they're really excited that our car's here. Like I haven't got a lot of negative feedback hardly at all this year. But I think it is the start of that, like long term, what is appropriate from a staffing model? You know, and obviously what people can afford, and the budget's not just gonna go up and up. For argument. However, I think that it's gone up pretty drastically in a short period of time. But I think, I think it's as designed to get to that point where it's pretty close to fifty fifty as far as should cost and what that looks like. And as you'll see on the call notes, like from October, which I'll send out, it's already starting to balance out a little bit. So, so you're paying for the third, but I will be hearing to you in the winter time, we're gonna be here. It'll start even on pretty well.
And council, councilman, if I may say, as, as we go forward to futures of this, Chief will come to the town manager, Dylan, myself, and, and we'll discuss. I'm not spreading many news, Chief, here, just because he wants it, doesn't necessarily mean that the towns can afford it. So he'll come and show his need for certain issues. And the other town manager and I will have to balance those needs against our resources and the other needs, building roads. We, we've seen what's happened in the county recently, and no matter what, we don't want to go down that path at all. But I, I think the important thing is, we're, we're on this working relationships that we have will allow us to have these conversations and, and come to the best solution for all the towns.
Sure, I'm sure, because budgets, right, drawing priority, the priorities drive budgets, and those go back and forth, right? And we just heard a lot of our priorities on, you know, US Highway six. And some of that is a, no, it's a priority for us, but whether the man, and the money is there, because we talked about things like speed cam, basically a presence, right? We can make it as punishable as you want, you know, if someone's, you know, get twenty years in prison, that's probably not gonna slow people down unless they think they're gonna get caught, or unless they are getting caught, or unless they know, hey, drive through Keystone, like that's, there's gonna be some kind of risk. And really, the only way is some type of presence. And so we talked about cameras and personnel, that kind of thing. So I just wanted to make sure that we're talking about budget, budgets and priorities, and not obviously just Dillon's, but also the priorities of Keystone and residents.
It, it'll come down to things like what's, which will give us the biggest benefit about safety, razor drive, having two more officers are starting underpass, they're somehow getting a stoplight, right? These are the questions.
Or having an officer there, razor drive would be a good one.
Yeah, these are the questions that we'll have to.
Thank you.
One, last quick question. Do you capture metrics on response times to calls?
We can.
I think those would be very interesting. You know, from the time a call comes in, how long does it take to have an officer out there responding? And I know there's some national, there's some national standards for what the response times should be. And it would be interesting to see where we are. And I recognize there's gonna be different priorities in there that will drive that as well. And those.
Are you looking like for an overall general average or like per call? What are you looking at?
No, I, I don't want to see all the calls and response types for asking. But I think you're looking for an average, there's some national standards out there that police departments choose to determine adequacy of how bad to use the bonding to certain classes of calls, not all calls are even.
Let me look into that.
Yeah.
The one thing that I would ask as a group with your permission, are the stats that we're providing, is that adequate? Would you like to see something different?
I think we're gonna want to see something different. And I think perhaps that's a discussion for a future work session and to lay out what you have, and then go into other, other things you could remind us of.
Okay.
And we also recognize, I don't want, I don't think we want to drive your administrative staff, which you probably do, to.
There's a reason I'm asking a question.
But we, we want to have something that's reasonable, but also gives us tremendous insight, I think, into the level of, basically, and the level of activity actually that's going on in Keystone.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I do want to point out something, especially with our Keystone-Dillon Police Department. Calls are a really good metric to measure activity, but given actually the uniqueness of Dillon and Keystone, there's a lot of police activity that is never logged through a call. There, there's a lot of presence required by police officers. Having police officers sitting on the side of the road is not something that's generated by a call. Having the police officers at the Dillon antifreeze are generated by a call. And those are things we need. We need the police presence walking around the villages or being in parking lots as people are leading festivals, that those are things we need that won't necessarily shorten.
Both we have with the existing level of staffing. If our call response was forty five minutes to respond to an urgent call, I know it is, but if it was, that would indicate to me that we have a major staffing problem that we need to get over, as well as potentially a presence in the [inaudible]. It just, last question.
Last question. At some point, I'd like the discussion as to how do you integrate with the Keystone Security Service and what the future of that is, not for now.
I mean, yeah, emergency services.
There, there's security now, no longer emergency. So I'd simply like to, because I know they're very anxious to think about they're gonna be around and how they should be integrated, so that's it. All right, we, thank you very much. So we appreciate your time.
It's great being here. And just in order, as a discussion, what changes would be nice though? So I hope to be here for you too.
Well, I've noticed that Dillon is now on a first and third Monday, or first and third of the.
They are, it's the end of the year, and I know that the discussion is happening. There was actually citizens that stood up a public comment that want them to change it. So I'm in there all the time as well. So let's see what they.
Thank you, again, thank you very much, Mr. Chief.
No, best.
The end of this discussion, the next meeting, I'm sure, and the town manager. I knew we would be available fine with, with Chief.
Yep, yep, and this should work out pretty well. This is something like, I've been kind of explaining to you all along that the managers have been working out a plan for it. Well, I'll start at the beginning, those who have been here. We have our nicotine tax, countywide tax. It's limited on what it can be used for cessation programs and health and human services programs. Currently, the way the IGA operates is the towns receive the jurisdictions, because the county's involved in this deal, receive all the nicotine tax from this specific county tax. And then we sit as a, the town manager sits as a bar and determine who gets what. Then the jurisdictions remit that money to the nonprofits that have, that have come in requesting money. They showed up here and asked for money, and they showed up at the town manager meetings and asked for money. Given that we, all of the jurisdictions except the county have, in some level, taken steps in the last year to limit nicotine sales. We've passed the flavored vape bans. Some of the other towns have passed complete flavor bans. Town of Dillon passed a flavor ban and banned the sale of nicotine products from any store containing fives. So I think Dillon now is down to the City Market Gas Station, which usually doesn't even have someone in the building. And I believe one of their liquor stores is the two nicotine places itself. So we're projecting, long story short, we're projecting a thirty percent decrease in the nicotine taxes across the county next year. I have to tell you that the town managers are kind of sick of each of us hearing individually from the different nonprofits. We don't know what the other communities are necessarily doing when they come and ask. So the town managers have come up with the plan for the distribution, which is for twenty twenty six, we project a thirty percent cut. Uh, for twenty twenty-six, we projected thirty percent cut in revenue, which allows. Two million one hundred seventy-seven thousand hundred twenty-nine dollars is our projected countywide revenue on the snitching tax. Um, we're. Mounting that number in cement. Thirty percent or forty percent of that number will go to uh. Prevention and cessation programs that are currently run through the county. And sixty percent to the health and human services, nonprofit grants. We actually also used to fund our early childhood options through this, but the county is picking up. Uh, that through their strong futures tax part. Um. If the revenue is less than two million one seventy-seven. Uh, the funds will be cut proportionally, the forty percent, sixty percent proportionally to match. The budget, so um. Whatever forty percent of two one seven seven is the max that cessation programs could get. And sixty percent are the max to health and human services. Currently, the health and human services have been Burt, um, Elevated Health used to be the community care clinic. Um. Had early childhood options, and I am deeply spacing over um. Deeply spacing on what are their big.
Is metal health piece?
Oh, the mental health piece, yeah. Um, in the, for twenty twenty-six, what we're planning on doing is. Instead of the towns administering the funds individually. We've been working with Summit Foundation, they're willing to take down this fund as kind of a donor advised fund. Um, the town managers would still have to sign off on the distributions. It would be an invitation only to apply for that sixty percent funds. And the Summit Foundation uh would make recommendations on how much. They recommend awarding to each of the nonprofits that are encouraged to. To apply for these awards. Um, that takes the uh, that takes a mystery out of it. Um. We don't have five different N Ds trying to determine what to give, not knowing what the different N Ds gave. And it it just makes it a whole lot cleaner by, makes it a whole lot cleaner for everyone involved. Any revenue above that two point one seven seven will be returned to the jurisdictions where it was raised. Uh, the way it currently is. So. If there's money above that, we get our proportional, or we get our share based on the portion of the revenue that was generated in. In the county Keystone. Um, are there any questions or concerns about going?
Oh, it's just, yeah, I just, so do they charge, is our overhead, do they charge us?
No.
So it's kind of free.
Yeah, yeah, but it. They, I I won't say, it it is free, but um, there's an expectation that. They're helping us, we'll help them, like we just did with our donation. Under the medallion.
Yes, but all two point one seven seven.
Yeah.
Gets dispersed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Carol.
Has this been staffed with the county's smoking cessation office? Are they weighed in on whether this is appropriate? Because they did come to talk to us once about how. It's a bigger challenge than people understand, and I, and they never interpret that as if. Ask for money, but is this, have they checked on this?
Well, no one is exactly happy. Everyone always wants more money, but. Um, we've kept all the nonprofits and the county cessation program informed of how this, they've been involved in this.
That's all. Thanks.
Um, I agree.
Is there any concern with the Summit Foundation will award itself money from this fund?
No, no, because it has to be healthier human services. And the the expenditures still are going to be approved by. The town managers acting as the board overseeing this fund.
Good. Other?
All right, uh, I have a couple. Uh, will the funding still flow through the town and then back to uh? The, or in the case of the cap, the cap, the case of the smoking cessation back to the county or back to the nonprofit, or will it? Flow will be captured at the county level and then uh the excess would, only the excess would flow to the town.
Um. We wouldn't actually see the money. I would have to check with, I can't see exactly how that is booked.
Yeah, because right now it flows into us.
Yeah, we wouldn't receive. My anticipation is we wouldn't receive the funds, but we would receive a report, which would.
So I can just make sure.
Yeah.
That's properly reflected. Of the other question, which for the Summit Foundation, we're gonna be having money flowing in on a monthly. Monthly basis, it's gonna be supercharged at the beginning and then drop off in summer and in the fall. Uh, how are they gonna be able to? Meet the nonprofits' needs, who are gonna be coming in and want probably enough for an answer, that's the thing.
Um, but I don't have an answer to that right now, mayor, but I will. Find it out, because clearly we can't. Make that hundred percent kind of a use even in January for years, so. I'd imagine my my assumption is it would be. Awarded, but you will receive monthly payments. But that's just an assumption.
Is your name for this new fund? Sorry, sir.
Um. Uh, public health and education.
Any other questions? All right, um, and the last item. Uh, is uh discussion of gray water legislation, with that, we'll go to the town manager.
And I will let a town attorney, Jennifer Benson, introduce it.
So in um twenty twenty-four, the state legislature adopted uh new legislation, which really flipped. The policy on use of gray water. Um, prior to, and this this legislation is effective January one, twenty twenty-six. So currently, um, for a municipality or a county to allow the use of gray water. They needed to opt in to that system. Um, starting in January of twenty twenty-six, the state has said. Um, that we want to kind of incentivize the use of gray water. And so now use of gray water is allowed. Um. Unless a municipality says it's not allowed. And let me just back up and and explain a little bit what gray water is. It is in the staff report, but. In case, um, there are people online listening or or whatever. Um, but it's wastewater collected from bathroom, laundry sinks, bathtubs, showers. Laundry machines for beneficial reuse. It does not include water from toilets, urinals, kitchen sinks, dishwaters. Dishwashers or non laundry utility sinks. Um. It has to be collected in a manner that minimizes contaminants such as human waste, food matter, and hazardous chemicals. And that's set out in the regulations by the C D P H E. So because of this new legislation, wanted to bring this to attention, you do have a couple of of choices. Um, that you can do as a municipality. Um, you can just do nothing. And essentially, that would allow gray water to be used in new construction under the state standards. Um, you can decide to opt out. Um, and then in that case, gray water cannot be used in Keystone. Um, or you can take a a stronger approach and you can have. Adopt a local gray water control program. Um. I have done some research in municipalities. In the, in Colorado, a couple of municipalities have actually opted out. Um, Boulder Lions and Greenland Village are ones that I've noticed have opted out. Um, and the C M L has put together a model ordinance for opting out as well. Um. D A F hasn't really researched this issue to look at um what the implications of. Of allowing gray water use, if there are any developers who would be interested in this. Um. In using gray water. So we don't have a lot of um. Information related to how it would be used, if there's an interest, what the benefits of gray water use are. I could tell you, I did find the city of Boulder has done a pretty extensive study on it. Um, and they really. They, if if they would um allow the use of gray water, they would adopt um more stringent standards. And their reasoning for opting out is that just the time and energy administrative. Um, staff to implement those more stringent standards doesn't um. Doesn't support the need or or use interest in gray water, and that it really doesn't conserve much water. That's an overview. I didn't answer any questions.
Yeah, sure. Joan, thank you.
Yeah, and and I I appreciate the background. I know you mentioned not having insight into a lot of uses for it, but. The one use that I could imagine, please clarify me if this does not sound like it, but in California, a lot of times they'll use gray water. Watering like grass or vegetation, that's really the only use I could imagine for gray water. Was there anything else that maybe the Boulder study or any other research that, like, what would it be used for?
Um.
Firefighting came to mind. Is there like any use for firefighting?
I I don't know if if it can be used for that. I mean, it's really an uh one person's use. It's not that it could be, it's not that it's transferred, the water would be transferred to a fire station, so. If I would find it hard to believe that a fire station would produce enough water. I mean, I guess it could go to the pumps. Um, I don't know enough to really answer that question.
I I would say no, because there's no reasonable way to transport that to a residence to whatever residential fire with one thousand access in a structure.
And and other locations, and I remember this, well, I've been over twenty years. Uh, gray water in California actually is used to water golf courses and that sort of thing, but it comes out of sewage treatment plants. And is, they have a separate, completely separate infrastructure system for moving that gray water. And and this, that isn't what this is talking, this is talking about specifically individual houses or condominiums or buildings. And capturing the gray water use and using it for something.
Yes, it it's a very. It's a very expensive proposal for someone to install their individual. Gray water system in their house, especially in a place where we don't really water lungs, have big lungs to water. That being said, it very well could happen. I remember a Judge Stevie Bush put up personally a gray water. System in at their Texas ranch president. It be, if you have the money and you're. They're concerned about water use, it's not something that might never happen.
Carol.
And I think I understood from their staff report, which is talking about new construction, or yes, this would be also addressed. Dressing, retrofitting a home or a con.
Um, the way, the way that I understand it is it's only related to new construction.
We're doing discussion. Yeah.
Um, educated myself on gray water, um, I did notice five recurring. Bullet points that kept coming up and numerous articles and information, and if I just may briefly read those five. Um, public health and safety risk, potential for cross contamination. And pathogen exposure of systems are improperly installed or maintained. Regulatory burden requires program administration, including permitting, enforcement, and inspection. Potentially putting a strain on local resources. High cost and low adoption rates. Limited water savings, other conservation methods, low flow fixtures. Zero scape may offer greater benefits with less complexity. And the cold climate limitations. Potential issues with outdoor irrigation in winter, reducing effectiveness in many Colorado regions. Freezing concerns, soil saturation, and runoff issues, water, water protection.
Um, can I? I was just gonna say, I've not heard a single thing in support of this. Is anyone opposed to. Um, supporting the option for. Opting out. Yeah, I forego my comments just to go along with that.
Yeah. Yeah, then, very well, I would just have a thumbs up, thumbs down. How many would like to have staff draft a opt out?
That's like, perhaps. It seems a lot easier on them.
There.
Okay.
You have your guidance. Did you agree with having a C M L draft?
Yeah, makes it easy.
Makes it easy. All right, um, we're now down into. This is exactly six o'clock. This is, we've never been in this territory before.
Let's honor it.
Yeah. So, uh, any manager council issues? Mr. Town Manager.
Nothing that can relate.
In that case, if there's uh no objection, I will adjourn the work session and we will reconvene in seven P M for the council meeting. And I would ask that, please be on time for the seven P M.